Resume this meeting of regular city council here today, August 4th, here at Goodman Memorial Library. Uh, let's see. We have one addition to the agenda. Uh, let's say, let's see here. A five-minute executive session. I'm not sure what it's about. This is from Jamie.
Think it was an elected personnel.
An elected personnel, okay.
Do we need to, you're here with the water tower?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need that hint in the beginning of the meeting?
Yeah, let's go ahead. We'll add that to the beginning of the meeting. We'll do that right before the budget hearing. Take care of him. Okay, are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, can I get a motion?
Subtle.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. You have any citizens' comments this evening? No? Okay, consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting July 7th, 2020, and budget workshop July 9th, 2020, and special meeting July 9th, 2020.
Subtle.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appropriation order 7-21-2020 in the amount of $110,288.73.
Subtle.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, starting off, Rick. Hello?
What?
Hi, how are you?
Doing fine, thank you. Try not to take too long. I got quite a bit of info here, but, um, let's see. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. My name's Rick Penner. I work for Viking Industrial Painting. We are a water tower maintenance company. We do, we do anything from cleaning out a tank to cleaning water towers, inspecting them, and any repairs they need, we do. And then we have maintenance programs that we have that go along with that. So, a while back, I came, came to town. Actually, I looked at your tank at the water plant and did a visual inspection on that. And I also did one on the downtown tank. And that's what this is right here. This is just a visual inspection that I did. So, I climbed the tank, and it's, it's my job to look at everything and point everything out to you guys. And just so you know what you have, I mean, that would be the purpose of the visual inspection. So, if you want to go through this thing with me real quick here, that'd be great. Um, as far as the tank goes, um, the first page is just some general pictures of the tank and the site, and, you know, the foundations are in good shape. I mean, you have an old tank. Lots of, they're all over the place, you know? They're similar to yours. Um, and people always ask me, you know, how long can it last? And I say, well, water, the steel water tank lasts forever. Take care of it. I mean, unless it gets knocked over by a tornado or something like that. But, but they'll last. And yours is, I'm not exactly how old it is, sure how old it is, but it's probably twenties, maybe thirties, I don't know. But anyway, um, so the things that I look for when I'm looking at a water tower is I look for the sanitary issues first, because that's what's important. And then I look at safety issues, which is also really important. And then we start looking at things like the, the structural condition. We look at the, at the coatings. Um, and we just look at all these different things. But the, the sanitary and the safety are the first two things I look at. Um, if you see this picture here, you've got a lock of a ladder gate on your tank, which is a good thing, um, just for liability reasons. The coatings on the, on the lower part of the tank, on the legs, and the I-beams are getting, you've got aluminum on the tank, but it's getting, a lot of it's getting, starting to peel and getting thick in areas. So, that would be something I'd point out as a deficiency. It's got a cable safety climb on it. That's a good safety item to have. Um, some other things I'd point out are just that the, this tank was built by CBI based on the railing, and, and it's, it's in good shape. It's supposed to be, OSHA says it's supposed to be 42 inches high. It's 36, but it's still safe. Um, the shell of the tank, the coatings are in good shape. That all looks good. It's got a proper vent on the roof, which is something that I don't see a lot. I mean, I see a lot of improper ones. This is a, this is one that's approved by KDHE and AWWA. But if you look at this other picture on the roof down here in the lower left corner, you can see the patches and the corrosion that's going on with the roof of the tank. And as you turn the page and go inside the tank, um, you can really see, and these pictures down here of the bottom of the interior, you're just, you're looking down into the bowl. So, you can really see the bottom pretty easily, and it's clean. But in the picture on the right, if you see all the, all the bright spots, those are all the holes from the roof of the tank that are, that shine into it. So, we're always looking for openings. The tank is supposed to be sealed. And, uh, it's pretty obvious that on this tank, if you turn the page, there's more pictures of the roof. And a lot of you probably already knew this, I don't know, but there's, the tank needs a new roof. Um, it's pretty obvious from those pictures. So, on the last page, I'll just skip through this as quick as I can here, but on the last page, I go through all those items I discussed and bring up all the deficiencies of the tank. Um, it's my job to try and get people to plan ahead, because once you get behind, it gets really hard to catch up. And, you know, some of these, you know, the roof's a big ticket item. But there's other things, too, that I bring up, and, and that would be the, uh, you know, the ladder, in my opinion, the lap, I mean, I didn't feel unsafe on the ladder, but the ladder's a hundred years old, probably. And if you follow OSHA rules, they say it's got to be 16 inches wide, got to have at least seven inches of toe kick space. And that's really the kind of the, your ladder isn't quite there. Um, the, the toe kick space is a little bit of an issue. I mean, if you've ever had to climb a ladder with your feet sideways, you know it's not a, a safe thing. So, that would be another thing that I'd probably recommend, is think about putting some new ladders on the tank, which really isn't all that big a deal. Um, and then just a bunch of minor things, like there's a banned electrical conduit on the tank that should really, doesn't need to be there. It's just in the way, and that would be something that you could take off. Um, another OSHA issue is that there's no secondary access into the bowl of the tank, which you were required to have. Um, and a pass-through would be a modification you do just where the ladder, when you're putting the ladder in, just put a pass-through there on the balcony so you can get through there rather than climbing over the rail. There's just some other minor things. I mean, security-wise, you've got leg, you've got some wooden leg guards that are on the legs, and I see that a lot when people climb up the lattice. Um, so you've got something on there, although, um, there was one of them, I think, that was coming off that could probably stand to be put back on. Um, so anyway, those are all the things that, that I see. If you add all this stuff up, it turns into a lot of money. And, um, the idea is to be proactive, and that's what I, there's different ways of doing this, and I'm going to describe you one way of doing it, and it's with a maintenance program. And if you'll go through this with me real quick, it'll just describe it. So, it's a, the maintenance program is a way that designs to shift the risk and responsibility of maintenance from the community leaders to a dedicated professional maintenance company. The program incorporates all aspects necessary to proactively maintain and protect the water tower on an annual basis. So, regular proactive maintenance will extend the life expectancy of the water tank. I mean, like on your tank, if it had been under a maintenance program, somebody would have been watching the roof over the years when all these issues occurred, and it would still be fine. Um, so why would you want a, a maintenance program? Well, just, a lot of times when councils change, people change, and, and, uh, water superintendents change, a lot of that stuff gets lost and it just gets forgot about, and people tend to do this a lot, you know? Out of sight, out of mind. Nobody thinks about the water tower. So, but I don't know what you'd do without it, and replacing it is an extremely costly option. So, um, that's one reason why. Um, it, it helps with the record-keeping, and it just, it just makes you be proactive and stay ahead of problems. So, honestly, it's just, a tank under a maintenance program, it's just going to be, uh, it's going to look better. It's going to perform better. It's going to last longer, and it's just a, a good way to be proactive and not reactive, waiting for something to go wrong. So, the maintenance program, um, the way it works is that Viking takes care of all ongoing maintenance, including inspections. These are all the things that are included with it. So, there's inspections, interior cleaning, coating touch-up and repair, all future coating renovations, um, anything like that is all covered under a maintenance fee. So, it, it kind of shifts the responsibility of somebody having to keep track of it all to us keeping track of it all, and you'd be getting reports so you know it's being kept track, being kept track of. And it, it's a nice thing for, from a budgeting standpoint, just because it's the same every year, you know? It's, it's, it's planned ahead. All of a sudden, you don't have to come up with $100,000 to paint your tank because you're paying the maintenance fee. And the initial renovations that happen to it, so basically what would happen, the way it would typically work is do the renovations upfront. We try and kind of spread that work out over a little period of time, and then we try to spread the cost out over time, because to come up with all the money at once to do the renovations would be pretty difficult. But once that renovation's done, once you get it to, up to a standard, then we're responsible for keeping it that way. Okay? And you would get, you'd get an annual inspection report like this, keep you up to date. Um, it would include all your clean-outs. It would include emergency repairs. If somebody came by and shot a, somebody came by and shot a hole in your tank, we'd have to come fix it. Somebody came up straight and befieled you on your tank, we have to come fix it. Those kinds of things. So, these agreements, they are one-year agreements. They can be extended indefinitely. So, they, they sell for new, but the city has the ability to get out of it at any point if they want. They just have to let us know. Um, as far as our obligation is, we're obligated to taking care of the tank as long as the city says we need to. So, it's, it's about, this whole process works the best if it's collaborative, so I can make sure I'm trying to give you guys what you want. I bring up all these things and these ladders, and every time I bring something up, it costs a little more money. And, um, I don't want to just say, hey, you have to do all this stuff. This is the stuff I'm suggesting. I don't want to jam anything down anybody's throat. And it, it works really well if we can just kind of sit down at some point and talk about it and see what's important, the most important things, and then get the dollars together and kind of figure out what makes sense for you guys. But it, it helps me, and I think it helps the city, if I'm giving you what you want, I guess is my point. And that's usually the best way to do it. Um, these payments on the tank agreements, um, they can be set up quarterly, semi-annually, annually. Um, and the rate that they possibly increase in the future will be no more than 5% at the most. It's typically quite a bit less than that. That would just, if it ever got to 5%, it would only be because there's some free thing that happens with the economy, or fuel costs, or something along those lines. So, this last page, I just kind of put a little summary of the way I see it working the best. That doesn't mean it has to be that way, but, um, it would be spreading the initial renovation costs over a period of time. And then that would include all those items, the ladder, the vent, primary access, secondary access, new roof, um, handrail modifications, um, painting, logo, that type of thing. And one thing I think I should have passed this around to start with, but this is another project we just completed not too long ago. It's a bunch of photos, kind of some before and after ones. Actually, it's, it's almost the exact same situation you guys are in, where we put a new roof on the tank, and they came up with a pretty cool color scheme on theirs, where they, they, uh, they put a new, they put new lettering on it, made it look a little nicer, and, uh, and they, they had aluminum tank all, no, it wasn't aluminum originally, but they put aluminum on it and then put a blue roof on it, and it looks pretty good. So, those are all things. For me to be able to price it out, I got to kind of know what you guys might want in lines of those types of things, too. So...
You have no idea on the cost then?
I do. I do. I mean, if you did, if I did everything I just mentioned, it'd probably be in that $175,000 to $200,000 range, probably. If, if you just said, okay, paint my tank, this is what it's going to cost today, I'd say that would be the range.
With everything you were saying there?
Yes, with everything I said.
Just asking this.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, that's what, that's what we're here for.
What's a new tank cost?
A 50,000 gallon tank could probably be, by the time you've got engineering costs and foundations and all that, you're probably in that $700,000, $750,000 range, something like that. And really, the only, I mean, the, structurally, your tank's fine, it's just, I mean, the roof. And when we put a new roof in, um, then you're getting a new vent, you're getting primary access, you're getting secondary access, you're getting the new ladder up there, all that stuff. And it, it makes it a little easier, because you do a lot of that on the ground, so... Basically, you just, and the tank you have, it's just got clips holding the roof down, and they get corroded a lot, too. And yours really is pretty good. A lot of them I see, I mean, there's gaps like this, where, I mean, there's birds getting in there and everything else. You don't have that. Um, but what you have is rain, whatever's, whatever's on that roof in the rainwater, it's running into the tank, going through the holes. So, I mean, that's where the issue lies.
There's like no holes in the, in the walls at all?
No.
Okay.
No. I looked at one somewhere else down the road here a while back, and it was just the opposite. Usually, all the corrosion happens above the waterline. Above the waterline's usually pretty good. You don't have all the, um, everything you need to make corrosion when, once you're under, when you're under the water. Um, but I looked at a tank the other day, and the whole bowl was like your roof. And they put fiberglass on the inside, and, I mean, that one kind of scares me. Now, those people, they probably need to think about building a new tank. Because to try and replace that bowl is just going to be so difficult, and it's got so many holes in it. I'm just worried that, what do you do with the fiberglass panels, you know? But on your tank, I don't feel that way, because replacing the roof really isn't, I mean, that's not a huge deal. Simply just cut it off and crane it down, and, and then, uh, build a new one on the ground right beside it and put it back up.
What's the cost of your maintenance program, I guess?
Um, the maintenance program, so the way it would typically work is, so like you spread the cost over five years to do the renovations, and then at the end of that five years, then it would just be a maintenance fee every year. And that maintenance fee would be somewhere in the $8,500 a year range. But like I said, that includes a visual inspection. You'll be getting an inspection report every year and a clean-out inspection. Some places are different. Some people want it every two years, some people want it every three years. I think, Jason, I think I've been doing it every three? I think. Getting the tank cleaned out about every three years. So, it would include that. And then when it comes time in 10 years or so, and it's time to paint the tank again on the outside or the inside, it's still that same fee. You don't have to come up with, uh, you know, $80,000 or whatever it costs to do it. So, that's the benefit of it. It's, it's a, it's a way, what's nice is, from council to council, is that, you know it's taken care of. If you guys make the decision to take care of it, you know the next people. Once people get on that program, they, most of the time, it doesn't make sense to get off. I mean, just because it's being planned out ahead of time, and it's, uh, it works really good, especially for small towns, I think it works the best. But those fees are also kind of, when you're doing, when you're doing your initial renovation, as soon as we paint the tank, then you're on the clock for the next time. So, some of those fees get built back into that five years. So, when I say it's $200,000, um, that doesn't mean it's 200,000 divided by five. You see what I'm saying? Because some of those fees have to go back into it, because we have to be preparing for the next time something happens. You know, honestly, the, the best way for me to describe it is, is that it just, it builds peace of mind. But it needs to be a, I mean, it works the best when, like I said, when it's a collaborative effort, when everybody's on the same page and we work together, because it's a relationship deal. Um, and needs, I mean, it needs to be that way on down the line, too, you know, with people you trust. Um, is, I mean, that's, that's what it's all about, really, being able to work together. So, that kind of describes that. I don't know where to go from there. I mean, obviously, we, I mean, you guys like to know some prices and stuff, I'm sure. But like I said, I'd kind of like to get an idea exactly what you're looking for before I can figure out a, a true price. So, I don't know if that's possible.
I would say the most concern I am with is with the roof, of course. You know, that would be top priority if we were to price that out and then price painting. How else?
But I'm saying, on the painting, I just want to know how you want to paint it, so I know how to price it. And I can give you an idea what one compares to the, one way compares to the other. But as part of the maintenance program, I kind of got to have, I got to plan out everything that it needs. So, like the ladders is another one. I could just tell you, you have to put new ladders on your tank. I'm not telling you you have to. But if we sat down, I could say, this is about what we'd be looking at difference-wise, that kind of thing. That's what I mean by sitting down and talking about it. I mean, the roof is an obvious. That one I say, you have to do it. But others, a few other items that I don't say you have to. But I want to point them out to you.
So, out of that $200,000, how much of that really is for the roof, I guess?
Uh, probably about, okay, so what's included with the roof is, obviously, you got to paint it. Um, you got to blast it and paint it, and then it's got to have a vent on it. It's got to have a ladder on the roof, and it's got to have two access points. But so that all comes on the roof. So, that's probably about $60,000, $65,000 for that, at least. Yeah, probably 65,000 by the time you add everything in.
Do we know how long our roof's been on there?
Jason, do you have an answer to that?
Since the tank was built.
No kidding?
Yeah.
That's original roof.
Yeah. I'm sure it is. I mean, just by the construction, I'm sure it must have to be. And I, I mean, like I said, I look at a lot of cone-top tanks, and most roofs are still in pretty good shape. Most of them are. But at some point, something happened with yours, where it just wasn't being taken care of, and it just has gotten too far. It's too far a patch.
Pam and I have, um, sat down a couple of times, and we kind of discussed amounts that, you know, it's the, the four or five years with the larger amount, and then it goes down to the yearly maintenance fee. And, um, we kind of have started looking at what funds to take that out of and how much our budget can handle and, and things of that nature. So, once you guys kind of point us in the direction of where we want to go, then we can for sure pinpoint that down. Um, I think Pam and I were looking at about $40,000, $40,000, possibly $50,000 to be able to use.
A year?
Mm-hmm.
How much was that, Jamie?
Uh, $40,000 at the most, $50,000 a year for the, for the first four or five years. And then, like you said, it, it drops down a little bit. Um, just kind of things that we were looking at. Um, you know, we have the capital improvement fund charged on the bill. We're not, I'm not sure why that was ever put on there or what, you know? So, in, in my opinion, um, you know, using money out of the capital improvement fund to, to be able to improve some of our infrastructure and things that we need to use, um, we've, we've looked at it there. You know, we have the 1% sales tax that obviously would be able to qualify. So, we do have some options, but like I said, the, the capital improvement fund and the water, I think we have water replacement. We looked in just a couple of places. So, um, from what Pam and I looked at, and our opinions would be that we could afford, I think we, I think we kind of talked $40,000 to make it work, um, with all, all of the, I think that was when we were talking about doing everything.
That would be to work everything, probably would be, that'd probably be, that'd be in the range.
And that was just like the pre-win discussions, um, that we wanted definitely, you guys to kind of point us in the direction of what you wanted this to fix and how you wanted to move forward on it, and we can get it pinpointed.
Now, if we spread that whole thing out over five years, do we still pay you the maintenance fee every year?
That's going into that.
That's going, that's built into that price.
But you're only paying a percentage of, okay, like say, say we set it up to do, okay, we're going to do the steel repair. We'll do the roof and the exterior in the first year. And then we, we don't need to do the rest of the interior until the fourth year. You'd pay that maintenance fee, but only for the parts that we've done. It would be, you see what I'm saying? So, if we painted the outside, you would start paying the maintenance fee the next year. But if we don't paint the inside till the fourth year, you don't start paying the maintenance fee till the fifth year. You see what I'm saying? Because we're anticipating that we're going to be painting your tank every, you know, every 10 years, or every 12 years, or whatever it is. So, you don't, you don't start on the clock till then. That's why I say, it's not like just taking that full amount and dividing it over five years. Because first of all, it's going to cost a little more in four years to do the work than it would be to do it today. So, does that make sense? So, it's, it's not, that maintenance fee, it does start, the clock starts earlier, but it doesn't start till you actually do that same work. If that makes sense.
But there's not a set schedule, like it gets painted every 10 years, or?
No, we could do it that way. But I guess my point is, I don't want to do stuff more, I mean, it could be, what if something happens and then we got to do it in seven years?
Right.
We'll do it in seven years.
Right.
I mean, we want to do it when it needs to, is the point. And I'm just saying, that's typically about how long we usually wait. Every tank's different. And actually, a, a tank like yours usually needs the interior painted more often, um, because it's got, because of the way the plates are, you got corners, the way the plates are sitting, you know? So, you'll have, anywhere there's a corner, where there's a corner and an edge, um, you know, the paint is, it's thinner, it gravitates away from the corners. So, a lot of times, the cone-top tanks need to be painted more often than, than if it were a completely smooth welded, a sphere. The coating on the inside lasts a lot longer than the cone-top. And with all the, the amount of the coating that's peeling on the legs, I personally, just to tell you my background, I, I live in Heston, so I'm not too far away from you guys. But, um, I've worked in the coatings industry for almost 30 years before I started doing this, and primarily just with water tanks. So, sometimes I think about... So sometimes I think about coatings too much, but a lot of, a lot of other people say, people don't need to know it, just tell them you're going to paint their tank. Well, I can't do that because of my background. And so I have, I have certain things that I think are important to do to try and make it last that, you know.
What's your job with this company? Are you just a salesman?
I am just a salesman. Yep. And I do, and like, I, I do a lot of inspections and I'm with my crew, so, so, yeah, but I'm the sales guy. We're based out of Omaha and I'm the local person for them.
I mean, something I'd like to see for him to do, basically a bid sheet, what, in what order you think they, they need to be done, basically, I'd like to see it all on paper, a five-year plan. And I'm interested in it, I don't know what you guys.
I think that's probably the best path to go.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, that would, yeah, that's fine.
And you want to know a paint scheme kind of?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess when I think of St. John, I mean, I, I know your school colors are blue. So I think should have blue on it. And, and the block logo that's on it, that's fine, but it's kind of block. When you see, did those pictures go around? I mean, when you see what Janson did, I mean, it's kind of the same thing. What Janson did, they just went from block logos to that other lettering. That looks pretty cool. But there's a little price, if I replace the logo the way it is, it's one price. If I got to put new stencils up and all that, it's another price. It's not a lot of money. But I just want to make sure I'm giving you what you want. Because so like the block letters that are up there, when you paint it, you simply just take, you just mark them. You just take a punch and mark them and you just do dot to dot. And a lot of times the dots are already there from when it's been painted before. So that's real easy.
I think we need to change it up completely.
I, that's, that's what I'm saying and that's why I didn't want to just throw prices out there and, and do that. I also think the legs would look really good if they were another color.
We talked about, was it white, did we talk about white legs?
Well, I, honestly, the shell of the tank is, the coatings are in good shape. I think the shell should be aluminum, okay? But from the balcony down, I think that I can use a better primer that I can get the, I mean, those legs, if, go up and look at it close, guys. I mean, you'll see what I'm talking about. And I'm sure you've noticed it. I mean, it's, it's going to keep falling off. It's just like my old house was built in the thirties. The more I paint it, more it peels, right? Well, there is a, a certain primer you can use, but you have to use this primer to do it that will basically just kind of hold it all together. And it really does work. And it's been used on a lot of tanks like yours. But when you do that, then I can put different top coats on it. When you have aluminum, you really need to go back with aluminum unless you use this primer I'm discussing. But if, if I can use this primer, then I can paint the legs whatever color I want. So a lot, a lot of people paint the bottom of it black.
Doesn't that go a lot of sun, I mean, doesn't it fade and chip faster in black?
It won't chip. I mean, this stuff that I'm putting on there, it's like wrapping it in a rubber band almost. But it won't chip. But yeah, it probably will fade faster. I mean, because it's going to soak in more UV for sure. But there's a lot of places that have done it. So that's one option. You can do whatever you want.
I mean, do you have somebody that can throw designs together for us?
I can, I can, but I'd like to have an idea first because I have to pay for it. So that's why I'm asking for a general idea. If you can tell me what ideas you want, then I can put something together. There's actually an interactive three D program that a paint manufacturer has that you can use. But the one thing, the one style of tank they don't have to do it with is a cone top tank. So I don't, it, it, I've tried to do cut and paste stuff with that, but it doesn't look good. It looks like your five-year-old did it. But, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do that. And we did that for Janson.
Or you guys want to stick to the mascot color, school color, white, blue, tiger? Or where you can consolidate, change the mascot completely?
I like the lighter tank and then maybe the blue lettering. I don't know. For some reason, a darker tank, the darker seems like it'll fade.
Yeah.
My vision was a blue top and the entire thing white, but you're saying that's fine.
It can be done.
Just more money?
A little more because I have, by doing, using this primer, it adds another step for me. So, but that's fine. It's not that much. I mean, I can give, I, when we sit down, we can talk about what the differences are.
I think that what we need to do is just, I think that's all great ideas and I like the ideas that are being thrown for the color scheme. But like everyone has said, the priority is getting that roof fixed.
Yes.
If we could get numbers for that and then everything else that council has brought to you, we can discuss it then. If you can get some numbers to us as soon as you can, that'd be greatly appreciated because that is something that we need to take care of.
Right.
He needs the ideas for the paint to get the numbers.
Right, right.
I, I have a general idea now. I can do it. I mean, I have an idea what, I'll, I'll say like option A or option B kind of thing. Because the color makes no difference. It's, I have to know whether it's aluminum or a color. So I kind of have an idea what you're looking at.
And all of the recommendations that you've put here on the last page, can you just kind of give us a ballpark figure when you bring these numbers back to us or just give us, or give us concrete numbers so we have an idea of what we're looking at in the future?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate y'all's time.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your, your time, Mr. Pedder. Okay, at this time, we're going to go into the 2021 budget hearing. So does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this?
I didn't know if Ross got a copy of it since. Along the table?
I believe that's what we need to do. Give Ross a moment to look at all.
Yeah, I mean, it's essentially the same thing that you guys got before, just that
He has all the corrections that council had wanted last time.
Well, there wasn't a ton of corrections, other than Ryan getting five hundred gold stars for asking questions. You know, we had kind of discussed at the budget workshop, the difference of the numbers for 2020 to, compared to the 2021. And as you'll see, if you flip back to page eighteen, it's the second to the last page. It's, it's the budget summary page and you're seeing, you know, the last one that we had, 2020 is, is actually six million, one hundred seventy-nine, two sixty-two. And it's only jumping up, you know, we, we thought that that difference was excessive and we, we couldn't figure out necessarily why. And then when Ryan had asked, we dug a little bit more and figured out what was going on. So it just changes that 2021 to six, six million, two hundred and nine, two sixty-eight. So it's, it's the mill levies changing just a little over one mil instead of what we'd originally anticipated. So that's really your biggest change, you know? And then I have notes for different things to just change in this, in the system on our end, but nothing that would affect here.
Counsel, are you okay with the 2021 budget as it stands? In that case, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Salute.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Okay, moving on to department heads. We have anything from chat, Jamie?
Not here under, I'll discuss some stuff under business.
Okay. Water department, Jason?
Well, not much, just what I had wrote down there, typed down there was just the salt spin word, delivery, et cetera. As far as the water, no, not right now.
Looking under your administrator report, Spin Doctor, eight hundred. You found one on Purple Wave?
That's what I heard.
Did you do that or did you do that?
I found one on Purple Wave. It goes up for, it goes, so Purple Wave is an auction site? I tell you the things I learned. It's a, there's going to be, I think it's a, I think there might be several entities, but this specific piece is from the city of Augusta, I want to say. And I have a call in to try to get more information regarding it. The pictures all look like they're in good condition, but I was going to try to actually speak with someone and then the auction's on the first, so I was just going to kind of keep an eye on it. And it, there was a few bids early on, but there's been no movement in the last couple days on it. But I just check it randomly every day and then, I mean, in my opinion, if we can get it for, for less than what a new one would cost, it would be.
It was the same thing, I guess, like same setup, the trailer one?
It even had the trailer.
September first is auction date?
Mm-hmm. And then it'd have to be picked up by the fifteenth. But like I said, I have a, I have the call in, so I'll update you guys more as, as I find out more from there and, I don't know, I don't know if we need to go test it out or how all that works, but.
I'd say like for the next meeting, if you can put it in our packets, the pictures that they have on there and add it to the packet so we can look at it and we can decide how much to tell her to spend.
I can send you the link via email tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, just do that.
I looked at it, it looks like it's in really good shape, but I just wonder why they're getting rid of it.
Hey, that's the big question, why are they getting rid of something like that?
It looks basically, yeah.
Keep an eye on that, Jamie. Keep us a price, please. Have anything else there, Jason?
This is a waste water. The JCI had got that all together, works great, bar screens in. And it's like I put on there, hooray. I'm glad it's done.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason?
Jason, I guess this is probably more streets and parks, but had brought to my attention by a couple concerned citizens, the, the tree dump, the grass dump area. Is there a way we can improve the drainage?
Working on that. I sat there, talked to Marshall about that, we're moving it south to the fence. And then I'm taking that dirt and trying to move it, slowly move it over there and get rid of that water. And then meantime, when we get a little bit more time after West Street's done, then we're going to start moving all that wood over there, those big old tree stumps, and see if we can't get it diverted that way as well.
Moving those some over to burn is what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, because it will, it'll, it'll take a while to burn that stuff. But yeah, slowly working on it.
Okay, since we're on the street and park, do you have anything other than what you've given council on your sheets here?
No, just trying to get it, trying to get it down the floor so we can get it sealed is all I, that's my main concern right now.
And man, it's a, okay, it's on the list for West Street. Good, okay. Okay, any more questions regarding streets and parks? Okay, moving on. Do we have, have we heard anything from Lisa Cormo, ground administrator?
Did I send you guys an email update from her response from the state?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's about where we're at for that. Still waiting.
The playground stuff is completely done, it looks like?
Completely done. It looks good.
All right, if there's no other questions, comments, or concerns for Jamie to pass on to Lisa, we'll move on to police department. Chief Adams.
One thing I got, I forgot to bring it up last meeting, I was going to see if I could get council's permission. We had that quarter prisoner transport cage that came out of the Dodge Charger, the console. We've got the K-9 cage out of the old Dodge pickup. We've got quite a bit of stuff that's just sitting up in the office now. Obviously, since it's city property, if I get council's permission to put it on Purple Wave and go ahead and sell it and see if we can't recoup some, you know, get some money and put it in the, in our emergency vehicle fund or in that vehicle fund and put that in there. But it's all just sitting up there, we're never going to use it. Did talk to Tim who outfits our cars. He said instead of selling it item by item, he said I would just lump, he goes, if you lump it all together, he goes, you'll get more out of it. He goes, I just put it all in there and say miscellaneous police stuff, somebody, they'll start bidding on it, come and pick it up and then they'll pick out what they want and then they'll sell the other stuff that they don't. But we've got a lot of stuff up there. One thing I won't allow in the department is drop leg holsters. The previous administrations had bought, I mean, we probably have over a dozen holster, some of them still brand new in the packages that we found that were in boxes shoved clear in the back of things. We just got a lot of stuff. So I'd like to, all that old vehicle equipment and, and some of that stuff, put it on Purple Wave and just put it all in one lump sum. And, you know, at least we get something. We're not getting anything with it sitting up there and it's just taking up a ton of room now.
Can we get a representative that comes down and looks at that stuff?
No, we just, you just take pictures and, and all of that and then you just post it on there and then people bid.
I was going to say, let's sell the bus where we're at.
Sell what?
The van bus deal.
But I just, you know, we've, we've done a lot of work to clean up that place and there's just so much old, old equipment. All that stuff in the, the car equipment we'll never use. So we might as well see if we can get something out of it and then just recuperate that cost.
Counsel, are you okay with Chief going ahead and putting some of this excess equipment on Purple Wave?
I'm okay with that.
Where's that money go?
Fun, did you say?
Well, I would, I would, if we sold all that, I'd, I'd probably try to roll that, whatever we got out of it, roll that over into the, and it's not the emergency vehicle, but.
Capital outlet.
Is that what we get our vehicles and stuff out of? Is that what, is that what it comes out? Yeah, that, that fund there.
Sean, we just need, you had a consent, correct?
So basically, it would go into the general fund and then he can add that amount to the transfer at the end of the year.
I just can put it in the general fund. I just can put it in the general fund.
It goes there no matter what. If he wants transferred at the end of the year, it just would have to be earmarked to go to capital outlet for the police department.
Because it involves property, let's just go and do a vote. Okay. So we want to make a.
I'll make a motion to let police chief sell police property on Purple Wave.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Okay, Chief? Anything else?
No. Dustin completed his first week, took his first test, did really well. So we got thirteen more to go and he'll be back. So other than that, we're, we're plugging along and doing well.
Anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns for Chief Adams before we move on? Okay, moving on, fire chief, Chief Sanders.
We got both our engines pump tested a couple of weeks ago and everything's fine on that, so that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Sanders? Moving on. Okay, Jamie, city administrator.
So I had a mechanic and I apologize because I forgot his name. He's from Ellenwood. Casey. And he used to work at RMAC. And he came out Thursday to look at the dump truck. He worked on it until it started raining and he'll be back. So I do need to make contact again with him. Now, I can tell you what he said he needed. He came and got something fixed and then he said we needed, I don't remember what it A new governor? Okay, so.
Kansas.
Whatever that is. So, he'll be back, obviously, right Thursday. What the governor?
Big Governor on the air, Professor.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
So, one of those.
Big Chief.
Okay. So, that's the dump truck. Um, I would also like permission to put, we have a truck bed at the power plant that hasn't been used in I don't know how many years. And someone had requested to, to purchase it, but I think we have to, as its property, put out for sealed bids or put it on Purple Wave. So, I would like permission to put, um, this truck bed out for sealed bids and start that process.
Are you talking about the old gray Dodge bed? Did I have the old red?
The Ford.
The red Ford that used all the...
It's like a sixties Ford bed, isn't it?
Oh.
Yeah, just sitting out there.
Do you have to publicize that, or what are the rules?
I think so.
I don't think there are any rules on it.
I don't know. I was gonna look into the rules and then do it.
Just how it goes in the past, I guess.
Okay, so council's okay with what we're doing now?
Do you wanna vote on that, too?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a question, so, yeah.
I'd make a motion to let Jamie list the pickup bed trailer for sealed bid.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Jamie?
Um, so I know some of these were approved, but like I've told you in the past, and I apologize, I wasn't here for the appropriation to add them, I forgot to print something, so, um, I need approval for these invoice, there's four invoices over my spending authority, and we just like to have them with the names of the companies and the amounts on record just for purpose. So, I'll just hand them over here to Kyle and let him make the motions. That, that totals on the back. The two here are kind of included with Allen's, um, police vehicle and, um, equipment purchase, and then we have one from Stannion, and that is, um, for the west, Northwest Street job that they've been working on. And then there's another one from Van Deest Supply, and that is the mosquito spray. So, I just need, I just need the name of each company and amount, so we can have that on record with, for the office.
Uh, I have a motion to approve, uh, invoice from American Aluminum Accessories for, in the amount of two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Oh, I think the...
Oh, is it? Oh, I apologize. In the amount of three thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to approve the invoice from JR Audio in the amount of two thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Second. And, and these were all items that were approved?
Yeah, this, so, the, these two, these first two were, um, Allen's vehicle and equipment purchases. Um, was it Stannion was the next one? That was for the electric project on Northwest Street, and then the last one will be the mosquito spraying.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is that these are, these are items that we've already talked about previously.
Besides the mosquito spray, yes.
Besides the mosquito spray?
Correct. Um, as, as far as I know, we, correct.
Right, like the Stannion, that was the amount that we had talked about before, and we have to approve it again?
Well, the project amount, I think, was, was given to you guys, but this invoice by itself is over anyone's spending authority in the city. So, if it's, um, if it's over this, if one single invoice is over the city spending limit, we like to have it on record, but yes. And I can try to go back and try to look, the only one I would be nervous about is the Northwest Street, 'cause I don't know for sure what has been ordered or, I mean, I know you guys approved that amount, but we, I just see the invoices of the projects. I, I'm not keeping track, I, I can keep track of, but it's...
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering what the six thousand thirty-six, you know, and it is, I guess, the wire?
For what?
For Stannion, I mean, it's...
So, that's several invoices, and that's just the, the total? But it's, it's when the, the one invoice comes in, you know, for the, the, over the two thousand is when I...
Here, a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to approve the invoice from Stannion in the amount of two thousand ninety-five dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd make a motion to approve the invoice from Van Dees Supply Company in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we can always look at each invoice, like if, if you're concerned about an actual total, we can, we can always go through that.
I'm just...
Yeah. Right. Um, the other thing, uh, Isai had kinda brought it up earlier today about, um, some training for, um, streets. Is it LTAP?
Yeah, Kansas LTAP.
Okay, so, I've, I've looked at, at everything before, and with COVID, everything's a little bit, um, changing, and they did direct me to the University of Minnesota, and I created an account where we can do an online training for gravel and street maintenance. Um, so I've created that account and got enrolled in that to see the process of that. But then I also got ahold of the state, and, um, with, with everything going on in the, the size of our town, they said for a minimum of five people, they would come out and do a training, um, for fifty dollars per person, um, to offer the gravel and, and road maintenance, or street maintenance training for us. Um, they, the minimum was fifty dollars, or ten, I'm sorry, ten people minimum, but they said that they would reduce that to five. Um, so, I don't see why all of our guys couldn't take the training if you guys were okay with it. And then I actually have a call-in to fill to see if they need, you know, I was gonna extend the offer, if the county had people, or if the city of Stafford or Maxville had people, then the state could come down and we could get that training, and then it would benefit more than just our people. But I would, I mean, I am suggesting that all of, all of our workers take the training. I don't see why we can't have more knowledge for everyone, if you guys are okay with that, for it being fifty dollars a person.
Is that a one-day deal?
I honestly don't know that. I assume so. Um, it was just the initial conversation that we kinda got started, so, I assume it would be a, a one-day deal, couple hours, 'cause, I mean, for fifty dollars, I don't think that's, do I? But I could be wrong.
Well, I mean, I would hope there'd be more than one day, though. But...
Well, your other option is online.
I just don't think our guys...
Online.
Like, for me, online, I like, like, hands-on stuff.
That's why I'm asking for them to be able to come out for fifty dollars a person.
But I would want it, I mean, for me, I'd want our guys just to have our guys, them just show our guys then their attentions on our guys, and they can ask questions and whatnot, compared to having fifteen other people. I'd like it to just be our, us, I don't know, but you guys, you just get more attention that way.
Well, I don't think we're gonna be having anybody else besides our guys, are we?
She said County, Stafford, Maxville?
I was just, if the state was here and other people could benefit from them being here, I was gonna...
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that.
Okay. So, yeah, it's under my spending limit, but I figured it was something that you guys...
I think it's a good idea.
I don't think it's a bad idea to ask the others. You might get some and you might not. But I would think our guys need all go through.
Yeah. Check on that, Jamie, and, uh, see what else you can find out about it, okay?
Yep.
All right, you have anything else?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Okay. Anybody got any more, uh, questions, comments, concerns for Jamie? Okay, moving on.
Oh, wait, I do. So, um, I've been talking a lot with Shannon, and the car show's coming up at the end of this month. And she was on board with being able to continue it, but she is a little bit nervous to, to still say yes, because we have had one death in the county. Um, so I wanted to kind of get your guys' opinion, where you stood on having the car show. Obviously, the, it's, it's, it would just be the car show. Um, Pam and I talked about spacing out the cars, like every other stall, so we could practice the social distancing, and we would have one food truck, all other events would be canceled. It, it would basically be the, just the cars, a raffle, and one food truck. But I wanted to get your guys' opinion before we moved forward and continuing to collaborate with Shannon. You know, we kind of just talked about canceling everything till the end of the year, but I just, I, I mean, I see all sides of everything, and I just, you know, part of me says, let's get back to the new normal we're gonna go into, whether that's having to park every other stall or what, but, I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to continue on. But I don't wanna have it, I mean, it's, you know, I, I don't know if I'd say it's a city event, but, you know, we do do it with everything. So, I just would like your guys' blessing or not blessing to move forward on it.
I would just say, continue on as your plans, is what I would say. I mean, we've had other events in town, but nobody's slowing down, you know, bring out-town, out-town people in, I think it's fine, yeah.
And we are, like I said, canceling the, you know, we're not gonna have the beer garden, or it'll just strictly be the car show, and remind people to use common sense and do as they feel safe, so...
Do you think?
I do, I think it's fine.
I just wondered, how does that, do, do they have to register their car, or do they just, people just show up with their car?
So, we have pre-registration, and, you know, we do, like, a free T-shirt for the first however many, and we've lowered that just because we're not sure on how many people will even come, but with car shows, and I know everywhere's canceled, but with car shows, you know, you get those people, and they have those car shows planned, and we're just a few years into it where we're a little bit ner, we don't want to not have it, and then people be like, oh, St. John, we don't wanna go back, so, I don't know.
I just wondered if you still have the interest, I mean, everybody, as far as you know, everyone that...
We've had quite a few, um, talk about it, and, I mean, there, we have people involved in it that take flyers to other commu, I mean, they're already coming in for flyers and wanting to help spread the word, so...
Okay, yeah, I'm fine doing it, I just wondered if...
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just continue with, uh, this right here, just make sure that you have the proper, uh, necessary precautions, is all, I think, if we do that, I think we'll be fine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure you guys were okay.
Anything else?
Mm-mm.
Okay, moving on. John?
I don't have anything, do we get down to the dangerous and unfit structures?
Okay, okay. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John? Okay, moving on to old business. Anything under old business, uh, council would like to discuss?
Um, I'm, sorry.
Is that Northwest Street, is that tidied up?
So, I needed to, on my, they are ready to go, they just have to pour concrete, from my understanding. Everything's ready, they just need to pour that, and they have the, they have the faucet, or the, is it called faucet?
Hydrant.
Hydrant? They have that dugout ready to be replaced, I believe.
Yeah.
So...
No, that's not in. Not yet.
Yeah, they are...
No, I thought, I thought Allen, I said there...
The way that line come in was from the southwest and angled over there, so I talked to him, and the way it is, I figure we, when he's ready, we just take the can up, he can get ready to hook his line up, and then we'll just put a T going onto his house, and he can put it anywhere he wants. 'Cause I'm not, you know, if he's, if we hook it up, and then he's gonna have to start digging around trying to find his old line, so I figure we, he got a new house, he might as well just put a new line and everything in there. So, that's when we'll just do it all on one sweep.
Okay, small deal, no back?
So, we're still waiting on an answer back. John's not sure what they're wanting that doesn't cover our current contract.
I thought everything was covered originally, and I just haven't heard back from him. I'm not sure what he needs now that he doesn't already have. But he's, I mean, the insurance provision, everything was already in there, so, I, I just don't know.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on, new business. My presentation reports on dangerous and unfit structures.
So, you all have a nice big packet, and I, I packaged it bigger than the paper, so you can keep adding to it during this process. And this will be the resolution that we will need to pass with the proposed date for hearing. So, then you can bring it up?
It was in my bucket.
Well, this, we get a second copy?
It was in the last email.
It says, we have to be able to do it.
Just making sure I'm on top of my game.
Hey, the one thing you've gotta pay attention to is there are some of those properties, uh, that are just residences, and there are some that are, uh, residents and an outbuilding that you can see in the pictures is, is pretty bad.
Did anyone have any questions on any of the properties or the reports?
There's one, there's one clerical error on paragraph three, uh, so we would need to, for two oh nine west First Avenue, so I would need a motion to amend the resolution to add, uh, the word residence located on the property, commonly known by the street address, as two oh nine was first.
Can we do that all in one motion, except for the...
No.
How'd you guys get in the house? 'Cause this is the only one you guys got in?
I did not get into any houses.
Somebody may have had prior access.
Someone had access in the past, and I had knowledge of that, so I obtained the pictures of that person before.
This one didn't, this one didn't seem that bad to me.
If you wanted, I'm sure you could get in, and they only mow half of their property.
If you wanted in, the doors open half, two-thirds of the time, you can just go let yourself in, just let the raccoons out when you go in. Yeah, they mowed half the property.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
You suppose, you can see from the street.
I guess.
And, if, if there are properties you feel need to be reevaluated, we can certainly amend the resolution to eliminate those properties without slowing down this process, too.
I think you type all the property involved in...
Yeah, I don't, I don't see no, there were single one of them, I just, I just...
I really don't think this is that bad.
The ones that were paid up.
Who were right by your moms? That, that, you should come by here, see that, and see the rankings come out. You'll think it's worse. But they did, they did put a piece of wood over the part of the door, so I hope the raccoons got out before the piece of wood went over.
Well, I think they just have a piece of wood on the cellar part of it, too.
That's right.
And I think there's a, isn't there an animal door?
Yeah, they put a piece of wood over it.
Oh, that's true.
So... So what, how does this work? What is that First American Title, what's their doing in this, I guess?
So they did normally what I would've done, which is to go and check title, go and check to see what taxes are still owed on. And then the next step here would, you guys would set this for hearing, and then at the hearing, you go through the process of asking the landowners, talking about the property and that kind of thing. And that's when we adopt this single resolution per tract, making specific findings, that you guys sitting as judge and jury found that the property is unfit for human habitation or is a dangerous structure. So the next, this is just setting the date and time for them to appear. The next one is the big hearing.
The next one is where we'll have to discuss every single property, property owner.
Okay. So what, you vote on these individually?
I'm sorry?
We're working to vote on these individually, or what?
No, they're all in the resolution.
Tonight, we just...
I don't agree with this one, I guess.
Well, we, and if you're, if you're not in agreement, we can go ahead and eliminate, amend this resolution and eliminate that.
Yeah, but everybody has to...
Correct.
Yeah.
So I'd rather just say no to all of them, I guess. I just think this one, we're gonna lose that battle, 209 West First.
What, we're gonna lose that battle?
It doesn't, it doesn't look that bad. Like, when you're concerned to the other ones.
It's not bad.
It's just, because it's just like those triana houses were in a lot more shape, and we weren't getting anywhere with them. And they're in a lot more shape, so I'm not okay with going forward with this one.
You also have an absentee property owner.
So like, they're not around...
Yeah, lives in Oregon.
The person has...
And I don't know that he...
He was $15,000.
I guess the title's...
I've been trying to buy it. He won't sell it, he won't clean it up, he won't fix it, he won't do anything. He don't want nobody in it.
His ice, or we go buy and mow it. It looks like every time he pays his taxes, but he pays us to mow it when it gets out of control and pays us cheaper than what he could hire someone else.
And you're not condemning the property now. You're not finding it an unfit structure now. All you're doing is demanding they appear and explain it why, to you, why you shouldn't take that stuff. It's their due process right to defend the property, so to speak.
And if they don't show up?
The next step, the next step when we, when we have them all here is when we tell them they have 60 days to fix it, or we'll tear it down and clean it up.
If they don't appear, then the only evidence you hear is from city staff.
What about any of these that have a mortgage filed on them?
I don't think there was one.
Well, I thought this 209 bid, and I just wondered how that...
Yeah, there's an assignment, but it's 2009.
It looked like to me the mortgage was filed in 2008, and then it was just transferred, and most recently transferred last in November of 19.
Yeah, the mortgage company is an interest owner, so they get...
So how does that...
We notice them up, just like we notice everybody else. And quite candidly, having a bank involved that's going to go check on the property because they're collateral...
Yeah, they're gonna step in.
They're gonna step in.
That was the only one I saw.
Yeah.
Okay, is council okay with all of the properties on this resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Having said that, can I get a motion for resolution number 2020?
We need a date and time.
We have to set the date.
Okay.
It's two weeks of publication, then 30 days. So when does it get published?
So if we accept it tonight, and I send it to the paper tomorrow, it'll get in the paper the 12th, and then it'll have to publish the 12th and the 19th, 30 days from the 19th. So you could look at the week of the 21st through the 25th.
Can we just do it on the 22nd, which would be another Tuesday night?
You want that on council meeting?
No, be outside of regular council. Because we have council September 1st and September 15th. And then that would put it on the session, we'd do the following two. Because I think you want to, you want it completely separate from that.
Yeah.
Regular council meeting.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
That's fine.
And then I need a motion to amend that paragraph three to include, or clarify that it's the residence located on that property.
So do we need to do that first?
Yeah.
Motion to...
A motion to clarify paragraph three of the resolution so that it's the residence located on the property, commonly known by its street address as 209 West First Avenue.
So move.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I need another motion to clarify some clerical error in the legal description of paragraph six. It's just that we've got a hanging line there. Should said, "being a 50-foot strip off the east side of said lot."
That needs to be changed to what?
Well, it should read...
Add foot and move strip up.
Yeah, it should be, it should read, "being a 50-foot strip off the east side of said lot."
So being a 50-foot strip off. So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now the resolution should be adopted as amended.
I've made the motion to adopt resolution number 202004 as amended.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
There are also one, 112 South Prairie... 209 West First.
No, that's there.
Okay. 112 South Prairie, and then 105 South Prairie. No, that's one.
That's one way just to...
So there's one more that I, I need to check title. I wasn't satisfied with what First American Title gave to me.
I don't think you...
And then we decided, did they get pictures of those? We decided the pictures weren't sufficient enough to present those to council, and staff would like permission to enter that house, to get interior pictures, to provide additional information to you guys. But that requires us to petition the district court for approval to access the property.
Do we have any other properties that we need to do that with?
It looks like we've come down to just that one.
Or two?
One.
Just one?
Yeah.
Is that the last property on our list?
Yeah.
Well, I've got 14, though.
Well, but one was the car...
Oh, one was a car wash.
And what's wrong taking care of that?
Hi, it's a brick structure, and I can't say it's dangerous.
Yeah.
Nothing in the backs. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Cleaning it up?
The environmental code's gonna come into play on some of this. But I'm gonna see what we can get done on these, and then I'll continue my quarterly checking.
Alan, that was pretty good. I think that one, that we're talking on, 112 South Prairie, we need to, we need to get into the house.
Yeah, we've had a lot of complaints, especially here.
That house is horrible.
Yeah.
It's Dill is the last name. Now, normally, they won't respond to the petition, and so I'll file a petition. They'll get, if they're in state, they'll get 21 days to respond. The one problem we have right now, which is what Alan complains about on a weekly basis, is the fact that the Supreme Court has stayed taking default judgment against people for not responding because of COVID. But my thought was that it was going to be lifted, I think, on August 17th, and then we'd be able to provide like a motion for default, give them 14 days to respond to it before we can take default judgment. So I don't know how long we're gonna be delayed. I just can't predict that right now.
We can't get ahold of him, what, I mean, I've called Pratt looking for him, and I can't find him, so...
I'd just say whatever picks.
Is that it, Jamie?
Oh, you're right. I think you have this one.
Okay, there is a second one.
The back porch?
Yeah, this property was, 518 West Fourth was, looks like it was purchased on a contract for deed, because there's an affidavit of equitable interest filed. The windows look bad, the guttering looks bad, but we have no idea what, structurally, it's hard to tell without looking at the...
Where was that one at?
518 West Fourth.
Um, further west.
Oh?
I think...
Three houses down on the south side. It's...
Blue.
Am I saying this wrong? Reschers and Henkel are the interest owners of record.
We get, everything we, I mean, we mow it, everything we send, we get back. And we have no forwarding address on anything.
You've had monthly weed violations from 2018 through July of this year.
And that's just as far back as I even looked, I think.
And we need to do the same thing, get an entry to it, or what?
Yeah, on that one also.
Then I'd say file it?
Yeah. I don't know, you gotta do something about it, keep mowing it.
Which house is that?
518...
Gray and Fourth Street, go west. I think it's the third house on the south side.
Oh, yeah.
I think so.
Here, is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. All right, we have a five-minute executive session for non-elected personnel. Who do you want in on this?
Everyone.
Everyone, okay.
Council. Well, there's a lot of people sitting in state. Council mayor, administrator, and so on.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll resume at 8:38. Call this meeting back to order. If there's no more business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, I have two executive sessions.
You did?
You did?
No, I guess just one. We can do the other one later.
Get it up or whatever.
Let's go ahead and do it.
Three minutes.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda and add an executive session for five minutes for non-elected personnel. Jamie?
Yep, well, I think... How do you do that?
What?
Just kidding, it's open session.
It's open session.
Yeah.
She'd be a contractor.
See, I put it under mine, but then I wouldn't.
Yeah. It's beautiful for Judge, actually, that open session, she's not city.
I understand my motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we need to add a new item?
City administrator discussion?
Yeah.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to add additional information from the city administrator.
Thank you.
I hear a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Jamie, what you got?
Um, our judge currently makes $300 a month, and with the increase, I assume that she started out at that? I did not check that, so I apologize. Our increase of tickets the last at least year, year and a half, the caseload work has been exceptionally high. I would like to increase her wages to $500 a month. The rest of the year's budget would be okay with that, and what we just accepted for 2021 would also be in line with that increase.
Take it out of Alan's budget.
It does come out of Alan's budget.
Out of the eleventh.
So do you want a motion for that?
Yes, please.
I'd make a motion to pay the municipal judge $500 a month.
Second. Yeah, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You can go on now.
Okay. Having no more business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, being adjourned.